I mean, I think the big thing is that we definitely are being impacted by the fact that we're not getting our collections in like we need to and our self-pay went up. So I talked to Inova about the self-paid part. I was gonna tell you about that, but they could do the self-pay and they offered me two different directions to look at that. I would probably still, I haven't talked to Tish about this yet, but I would probably still have Kim Love, Joy, talk to people that need to fill out an application for charity care and stuff like that, but they could have someone for either a, I wrote it down, thirty, I think it's thirty dollars an hour, hourly work on the self-pay or ten percent, ten to fifteen percent is what she told me of the total amount. We have like two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand in self-pay which has gone up. And so for me right now, when I ask Dandy and them about the working self-pay, the answer I got was really they do it whenever they have time, which they don't have very much time. So it's not being worked. So I was wondering whether or not you would want to entertain having them go ahead and start working on the self-pay accounts until we come up with the total decision and then it's just a matter of do we want to do percentage of, um, chart, the percentage of dollars or do we want to go with the hourly rate? And I personally am recommending that somebody work on a self-pay because we're not getting, we're not getting anywhere right now.
If you're asking me, I prefer a percentage of collections because it's incentive.
Work harder. Well, I think that given that we have that much sitting out there, I would, I would agree with that. And I think they'll make enough money for it to be worked there well, but we'll make more money than we've been getting for a long time off of self-pay. So.
It's self-paid. They just, they, they just need to be worked.
Right. So that would be something that we would have to put a motion to for approval. But I, I kind of, I think since she gave me ten to fifteen percent, I'm gonna go for ten and see if I can get ten off of it. And then get that, get that self-pay figured out because like we can't afford to have it go up anymore.
So are, does, I don't know anything about Inova other than their presentation, how big of a company are, like can they have multiple divisions and kind of doing everything that, because we're about.
I know. I think, well, they can, but she just, just has somebody that she specifically could hire to do our self-pay accounts. So it's somebody she's worked with on another account. This person would be working two accounts for self-pay, but I think that's okay because we've got nobody working it, really. Let's talk turkey here. Nobody's working it. So I think that we should just go for it. What do you think, Tish?
Something is better than nothing and I would go the percentage route as well.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
We do. Please.
Yeah. So let's make a motion and then if we have any more discussion.
So I make a motion that Abby engage Inova for self-paid collections at a, should I say a rate? In the?
I would say, well, why don't you give me a little bit of wiggle room, but let's say no, no higher than twelve percent. Okay?
Okay. So I make a motion that Kathy, um, that we authorize Kathy to engage Inova for self-paid collections at a rate not to exceed twelve percent.
Second.
Okay.
In discussion.
Okay. All right.
Are we telling Inova what we're willing to pay?
Well, in my opinion, we are because we know how much we have in self-pay and it depends on how much of it they collect, they collect.
I know, but you're going to approach them with ten percent. No, your minutes said you'll vote at twelve.
Well, the only reason I do that is because.
That's why we should do those in executive.
No, you can't do them in executive, but I, I just, I, I understand the need for a line or a wall.
Yeah. I say to not exceed and I mean, I can always come back with what rate I got, but.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't want a delay on it.
Okay. All right. I will live with the motion. I'm just drawing it out that if Inova looks at their minutes.
I get you.
Yeah. Well, they can say ten percent. Well, I mean, yeah, I, they could look at that, but the truth is I'm gonna tell them that I can get ten percent for them.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're standing, but.
And the truth is if they strong our muscle on this, when their rate comes up for the bigger contract, it will be less.
All right.
I'm pointing this guy to involve.
She asked me what I was comfortable with. So I'm comfortable with the lower number she gave me. That's what I'm comfortable with, one percent. So, but, and I don't think that hourly works well because there's not an incentive.
I agree.
The percentage is much, and especially if she's working two accounts, it makes it hard for her to.
Right.
Keep track of who she's billing.
Well, it would appear we could give her a nice, give Inova a nice paycheck and so, you know, she gets a portion of it.
Okay. So any more discussion on this? Okay. Are you ready to vote then? So all those in favor of Kathy hiring Inova to do our self-pay, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same?
Next.
You didn't, you didn't track language of the motion.
Okay. So let me go back.
Which included the, the, no greater than twelve percent.
Okay. So do you have it written down?
Aye.
Yes, I do too.
Carrie Dross made the motion to authorize Kathy to engage Inova for self-paid collections at a rate not to exceed twelve percent.
Okay.
Seconded by William.
Okay. So should we revote on that or should I just say that it passed and do that, say that verbatim?
Either way is good with me. I just want the record to be clear that the motion that passed is as Mary just recited.
Okay. Thank you. You, I appreciate it. And keep me on track.
Well, we spent a lot of time over whether it should be a limit or not and how much it will be.
It might as well have it clear. Okay. So are we, so if you've got in the minutes and we should be good, correct?
Okay. Um, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Back to her.
It passed or failed?
It passed.
It passed. And now I can't repeat the motion.
No, I, I don't know that it was stated whether the motion passed.
I think I said it passed. Anyway, okay. It passed.
Passed. I wrote it down.
No, just wrote that down. You kind of did.
Okay. Now, so I think, so Carrie, do you have any more to add?
Just a few things. We, we've already discussed, um, and Ben brought it out that there's, there's a discrepancy, um, and it's that we're not collecting and the plan is in place with Inova and we're moving forward and we should get a handle on that.
I understand. My only, yeah, I just, expectations were a little, little different, but that makes sense.
Right. We, we talked about those timelines. Kathy said the same thing.
I, I, it didn't, it didn't meet mine either and the credentialing has been a, I won't even say what I said in financial committee, but it's been a, it's been a rat race. And so, um, I think we've finally gotten through that. I do have a couple of reports we're getting daily. Tish and I are getting now to pull. I'm even looking at cash that comes flowing in every day. We did get a bump to some cash today, right, Tish? But.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I, we cannot continue down this pathway because if we do, we will not have cash, but we have all this revenue showing, but we don't have cash. So I, I think that we gotta fix it.
There are some.
I'm a little worried about getting AP taken care of like that.
Yeah. Um, there are some bright points and that is the nursing home revenue, the nursing home cash collections, not revenue, cash collections, um, was up because they had four, like four people who were pending for long periods of time who, um, were able to get approved and get their bills paid. They had another self-paid person who, um, was able to get current on their bill. So they've been, they've been doing well over there. Um, so that does help and Kathy's plan is in place for, uh, the hospital and we should start to turn a corner on that.
Well, and just so you know, most everybody's budgets looked really, really good. They, they were making the revenue that we budgeted. That's the good news for the most part. There may be one little drop area or something, like Radiology had a little bit of a drop, but part of it is some of our money didn't go into the bucket where it was supposed to for like Echos and things like that. So.
And the other thing that we talked about and we don't really have a answer yet, but we're gonna be investigating is when you look at the utilization statistics, we're not seeing the same numbers in the revenue numbers. So we're seeing, you know, increased utilization in some areas, but not carrying over to revenue in some areas. And we're not really sure if that, um, we're not really sure where that disconnect is. Um, it may be in, you know, bills not, not hitting at the right time, um, charges not being pushed over, but it, that is something that, that we noticed in finance, um, that the.
They're being managed.
Departments that are up in statistics, they should be correspondingly up in revenue. Um, so we're, we're investigating that and we don't really have an answer right now, but we are gonna be looking at that moving forward. Is that fair?
Yep. That's great. Tish, did you want to give them an update from DZA, please?
Yeah. So, um, I received a call from this, um, from the state and they have given us until November first to complete our two thousand and twenty-four audit. I reached out to DZA and let them know that that was their drop date. We needed to have the audit presented before that date. Um, so they are working diligently. For some reason, no work had gotten done for almost thirty days on our audit, even though everything had been submitted at that point. So I know, uh, Daniel and Sean, who is our, the two CPAs that are currently working on our audit, and I had a meeting with Tom Dingus, which is our partner with DZA and said that this was, I said this was unacceptable. So the best of my conversation with Tom, Sean and Daniel, that audit will be completed and presented by that. The state did say that that was fine. I also sent them, they know that we have engaged DZA to do our twenty-twenty-five audit. That bought us some additional time if needed, but I did not tell DZA that.
And on DZA, the, the problem with this November first date is that's gonna call into a special meeting because we're gonna have to be able to approve the cost report. The audit, I'm not, I'm really not happy that they lagged on getting that audit done. It should have been done. They told us the middle of September, if you remember. So, um, the, I'm, I'm, Tish is keeping me calm, I guess, but I'm like, I, yeah, I'm disappointed. That's the word I'll use. And so we will have to have a special meeting in order to meet the statutes that we.
I, I say it's, we just have to do it because we, we, we don't want to keep this cycle of going and putting these audits in late.
No. Well, and the other thing is, is we're gonna have to do an adjustment again, correct?
Correct.
Because.
We've already started work on the twenty-twenty-five cost report. Um, and we've started work on the twenty-twenty-five audit as well. We've submitted all of the documentation so they'll be able to roll one right into the other. But because the audit again will not be completed prior to the cost report deadline, which will be filed on time, which is the middle of November. They will have to do a cost, a corrected cost report, which is exceptionally disappointing because we had that discussion before we engaged them, that they would get everything current and on track this year. Um, a corrected cost report is not catastrophic, nor is it unusual. It's just something I wished to avoid. I wanted to get the facility up and current this year.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Tish?
Okay. Um. May I, I just have a question for the finance, the other finance committee members. Did I cover everything? Do you have more questions? Did I cover everything we talked?
As far as I can remember, I know it's the thing that we talked. Agreed.
Okay. So I think that puts us on to you, Kathy.
Okay. So, and, um, I have, I guess good news, bad news, or indifferent news. I have more under the executive than under the regular ones. But, um, I wanted to give you an update. There's been conflicting information from the government relative to the, the shutdown and how that's going to impact Medicare. And that ends up impacting Medicaid a lot of times too. But this latest notice that we got on, on October fifteenth, I did look up some stuff from AHA, AHA and MGA relative to CMS clarifications on holds. But the government did decide that, um, there's the politics in it, but the basics of it is, is that, um, participation of possible congressional action, CMS has instructed all Medicare administrative contractors, which would be, be us, to continue to temporarily hold claims with dates of service of October first, twenty-twenty-five and later for services impacted by the expired Medicare legislative payment provisions passed under the full year continuing appropriations and extension act of twenty-twenty-five. This includes all claims paid under the Medicare physician fee schedule, ground ambulance, transport claims, and all federally qualified health center claims. Providers may continue to submit these claims, but payment will not be released until the holders lifted. So one of my concerns about that letter, I also read that they're trying to work on it, but what happened is the healthcare programs and waivers expired at midnight on September thirtieth. And so because of that, there's arguing about whether or not we're gonna get paid. Why this could concern us is that if we don't get, we did, I checked with Tish, we did get some Medicare payments or CND, I think, too. She showed me some Medicare payments that we got in October, but.
Yeah, but.
It might've been for previous pieces.
The way you read it, it would be the claims that are supposed to be set like today.
Right. So one of my concerns is that that is our key, we, those are key members of our revenue, okay, for our cash. So we, we might want to have to talk about what are we gonna do if cash doesn't flow like we need it to, to be able to sustain our base cash on hand? And then that would mean, do we try to, are we gonna have to try to go to? Is it good news now?
It is good news because it's only claims temporarily suspended for services impacted by expired legislative provisions such as telehealth services. So it's not our regular hospital and health services and physician claims. It's only the ones impacted by the, only the things that may no longer be covered under the new provisions. So.
So, okay, because it doesn't say that on here.
Claims for all other services will continue to be processed and paid in a timely manner once temporary period ends.
What source are you citing?
I am citing, um, I get, I get, um.
CMS.gov?
Updates. Yeah. CMS.gov, uh, newsletter.
That's what you're looking at.
Is it from today?
It was from today.
This was from yesterday. Though the, okay, says, then on October sixteenth, made a clarification.
It says limited claims hold.
To reflect they are only holding claims for services affected by expired statutory provisions. That's what it says right here. They are not holding physician fee schedule claims. So I've got, I was gonna tell you, I've got conflicting information.
Heart attack because I'll, we'll get our checks tomorrow.
Yeah, right. So, um, I, I just wanna, I just wanna bring it up because I actually, you know, everybody's got different stuff coming on. So hopefully we will continue to do that. If we don't, we have to have a plan B.
The Medicaid, the Medicaid claim, the, it wouldn't affect us either because we're a non-Midicaid expansion state.
True.
So.
That's true. Okay. So we'll, we've talked about that.
One crisis burden.
Yes. Thank you. Um, because I was, I was, I don't need to.
Yeah. So that would be terrible.
Mm-hmm. Um, then the next thing is, I went to the meeting on Wednesday where you guys were in class and essentially the state is, has that deadline of November first, was it, or fifth? I can't remember. That they have the deadline to get the, uh, November fifth, to get the rural health transfer vacation proposal out. When you listen to, um, and I talked to him a lot, I, I was a broken record in there probably on some stuff, but I do, he did keep coming back to me. So that's a good sign. Um, we talked a little bit about chronic disease management, care coordination, things like that we would need. But there was some pieces that they were talking about that had to do with, um, bringing systems into it and or regional concepts relative to the money. So that's got me concerned because some of the stuff that they talked about was having an EMS, this might sound good to some people, like the EMS group, but they were talking about having EMS have a central location and then having, I mean, spending lots of money to have a centralized location to be able to sort out all of the transfer pieces that you need to be able to do to, uh, and basically build a building and do all of these other things that I'm sitting and saying, is that sustainable after year five? Because where's that, where's that money gonna come from? They, they talked about that, but he did get lots of feedback from us. They're talking about what they're gonna do for rural health, for OB care. They did talk a little bit about, I know they had me just fell out of form about, we, we don't do OB, so I did an exception because we don't do that for the gap analysis and stuff. But they wanted to come up with some sort of plan for OB care. Um, it was pretty interesting to me because we were told to bring our ideas to the meeting and some of the system level groups brought, they brought basically performers and here's how much money we need and this is what we're gonna do to help support rural. And I said, let's not forget that this is supposed to be for rural, for rural facilities or rural pieces. I talked to him a little bit about, they've kind of lightened up on that they would, don't use none of it for capital expenditures, but, uh, which is good because I said that. And then they said, well, people have to have skin in the game. And I said, you're talking to rural hospitals. Our margins are low. And so if you want skin in the game, it needs to be something besides dollars. Are you, you know, are you hearing what I'm saying? Because we don't have the dollars to put out to match it. That's what happened with our whole HVAC program. We didn't have a million dollars to match up to it. So it, we, it went away on us basically. So I, I don't know what he's gonna do. It sounded to me like he's trying to, the, the state health department was gonna try to gather all this stuff and put kind of a ambiguous somewhat, um, plan for transformation. I don't know if that'll work with the government or not. And then we don't have to actually put a grant in, but we can give them ideas of things that we want to do. I just, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not sure that they're not gonna try to come up with systemized things that I'm not sure if it'll work for them.
So I don't know how many of you guys did the survey that they sent out.
I did.
After that meeting. I don't mean to be a pessimist, but I think they already, from the, the survey, things that they were asking, they already know what they're gonna do. They already have their plan written and they don't care what they, what we have to say. I was a pessimist speaking and I'm sorry.
No, no. They had stuff that they gotta figure out how to fit dietary pieces into it. At least they did have chronic disease management in there a little bit. Um, but I.
I am grateful to you for going and arguing as much as you do about the fact that it's about us, not about.
Yeah. That's what I said.
Government and growing systems. And I appreciate what you're doing. So thank you for pounding the drum.
Yeah. Well, and then, um, they said that it wasn't gonna include telehealth, so they're not gonna provide telehealth solutions for people, which is a little bit disappointing because that could be, we could do some remote monitoring of people from their homes at their RANS or whatever and take care of them that way. So I'm a little bit disappointed to hate, say that. But then he turned around and said that five to ten percent of it could be used for technology. So I'm confused about that. And, um, they talked about processed foods. I mean, how do we as a healthcare organization, other than classes and stuff, work on a processed food solution for the rural communities that, that's sustainable, that's rolled out and innovated at the same time? So I, I hate to sound like I'm sounding, but I, I'm a little bit concerned that they're off track from where they really should be relative to dollars. And I didn't get to tell him that there, but I, I mean, even just to see, there was an IT company, there's people that are trying to sell us into these systems that are trying, companies that are gonna try to come in and solve the problems for Wyoming. So it didn't sound like the solutions I was looking for. So to be able to do some stuff at the local level.
Or trying for a paycheck. Now, was your meeting in Casper then?
It was in Casper.
Okay. Cause it was reported on the radio, what's the directions that they were thinking about? Some of the directions weren't what we were thinking about.
No, they weren't.
Casper, I can understand why they would want those directions. That a lot of our things that people had brought up here, we're not.
I just, I think it's great that Kathy is, is a true voice of rural Wyoming. It is what it should be about, not about, you know, some telehealth community and in.
Right.
Seattle.
Yeah. Earlier, one of your concerns was that, um, they were considered going, thinking about considering all hospitals in Wyoming.
Right. And I, and that definitely I could see that that was part of it because these, these bigger system hospitals like Banner Health, which by the way, I sat a table away from them, but they were all very friendly to me, even though I was saying, this money doesn't need to all go to systems. This is, this is needs to be, there needs to be a real focus to it. Um, but definitely with the way they were talking about how they were gonna try to hedge it, they, the ear, the, the bigger hospitals have their ear. I mean, there was people who were asking to get robots for solutions. I mean, God bless them. Elon Musk would love it, but it's not what we need to focus on in rural healthcare. And, um, so I.
Did you feel like you were alone? Was there anybody else?
No, there were some other people at small facilities that were, most of them though were like.
I'm just, I'm worried that the Wyoming Department of Health is going to try to be part of the solution and then they're gonna wanna grow themselves.
Well, that is part of the solution.
Part of the money will grow to, go to growing them.
Well, of course, what they said is that they're allowed to take up to ten percent of that five hundred million that comes over five years, but they're not going to do that, they said. But, but however, you know, they have to do all these reports, oversight stuff and.
They'll hire at least one person.
That would make sense for people to do that.
Yeah. So I'm gonna keep listening and keep being a greasy wheel or whatever, but, um, squeaky wheel. That's the one I meant, not greasy. Squeaky wheel and see what happens from it. But I wasn't encouraged. I was discouraged at the end of the meeting.
You cannot fix Washington DC from within Washington DC. You have to fix it from the outside. It has to be citizen uprising and the only way you can do it is through an Article Five convention. There are lots of other ideas that people throw out there that, that aren't in the constitution necessarily. Um, this is a peaceful, legal, constitutional method for reining in the federal government, which like I said earlier, is the responsibility of the states. That's, that's one of their roles and they've advocated that responsibility horribly. Our founders would be appalled that we're thinking of solutions other than an Article Five convention, um, because that's the, the process they put in. Um, because that's the, the process they put in for this purpose.
There's a certain cynicism in this room about bureaucratic laws to improve rural health. I wonder why.
So, um, yeah, and I'm not usually like that, I can find some nugget, but I didn't, I didn't hear a nugget, so I'm hoping. Maybe they did hear us, but I talked enough that they should have. So, um, CT update, we are now fully certified with the state. They did have their first patient yesterday, I think. Um, the paper took some pictures and stuff, the patient wanted to be part of the pictures, that's good. I did ask. Nisha to have the ribbon cutting thing with the sponsors in November. Our October is full of activities. So I just told her she needed to come up with a date, so that it would be good if we can get the, some foundation people there, some of you guys there. And the sponsors that we've had that have sponsored the money for us, to be able to do the work we have. And the Medicare Railroad, just so you guys, I think we heard it in Finance Committee, but Railroad hadn't been being built at all. And I, there was over a hundred claims, that's all I know, but they're not real high claims. Um, they did get billed finally, which they hadn't been billed for a year. So those are, those are billed out. And, um. I talked about the self-pay, and then the other thing is, is that, and I will tell you that I, I'm proposing something a little bit different. It isn't a way to try to get to our cost statements, but, um, HealthStream has always given us some basic videos. For us to do for education, but we were missing out on some other things. Some of it had to do with safety. And compliance videos that we can have for our programs, for our staff, and safety and compliance are. Big issues, big enough issues that we need to have some consideration for that, those products. We also looked at CE Unlimited. Right now, PT has a CEU, like, program, CME, or whatever that.
So what's CE?
CE is continuing education, sorry, thank you.
So I was looking at CE and I go, Cavines, I wonder what Cavines has to do.
Yeah, so the, the CE Unlimited allows our staff for this price to be able to get their. Continuing education pieces, and quite frankly, it usually costs us more if we don't find something like this to do. Because they'll wanna go to some big class to get their CE's, and that's probably something we want, but at the same time. I'd just as soon try to have a, a mechanism where they can get them an hour, four hours at a time, and get what they need at one price. The dynamic health skills and decision support is different, and what that will really do is help us to eliminate. A whole bunch of policies that we write on our own, and use this as our policy format. Because it shows people in a video how to do a procedure, gives them a handout for what supplies they need to be able to do that. And it, um, documents the policy for it. They keep it updated for us, so that we don't have to worry about out-of-date policies. And as long as we have a policy that adopts this as our resource for our policies, for. Patient care, it will work that way. Does that make sense?
You're saying we need a policy on policy?
A policy to say that we have one policy. We have a policy to say we have one policy, or one tool to use for all patient care policies.
So what happens if there's something that, that we just are really don't want at all?
Then we just do go ahead and do a separate piece or take that out of it, but I looked at the list and sorted it all the. And we're, we're kind of, I, I think it'll be good, I know we've used that before. Like, say you get something in the ER you haven't had before, I'm just gonna make up something like, somebody's in there that's never put a chest tube in with the doctor. It's gonna help them to actually watch a video real quick, to put those tools together and be able to know how to insert that, and with. Well, without, yeah, but you get what I'm saying, so.
You're on my phone, I wanna watch this, like, while I'm doing the procedure.
Yes.
I've done a million of these, don't worry about it.
My feet are drooling over, they're talking to their brokers.
Well, and we have, we have teams of people, I knew you would laugh at that, but there's truthful times that people can go, they can go and look at something and be able to do it. Because we don't get some things every day.
Help get rid of some of the policies.
Yes.
It will help reduce the.
Hundreds of them.
Hundreds, thousands.
No, not thousands, but hundreds.
That sounds good.
Unfortunately, I feel like health equity and belonging is a big issue at least days. It's basically to how you want to treat people and how you wanna look at people as relative to their cultural norms. And, and then including each other as employees, cause we have employees that. We're working real hard right now on service excellence standards, that's what I'll say. So, um. And then there's a piece that's a HealthStream Leadership Development, that is something that's new. I'm gonna kinda wanna look at it and see if it's worthwhile, get at least one license, might wanna get a couple more down the road. But we, I, I'm trying to figure out how many leaders and what levels they have, to see what the leadership development pieces we can get. So with that, I think our previous, I, I didn't bring it with me, but I think our previous year one total was something in the neighborhood of seventeen thousand. This is like nineteen thousand five oh five. If I lock it in for five years, we only pay one year at a time. But I lock in the price and that doesn't go up higher than what it is over the five years now. Where it will, it does go up every year, it did go up on us a little bit anyway. So, um, I'm looking at about a. Uh, I know what I'm doing, but I sound crazy sometimes, I talk out of both sides, but I think the four thousand dollar investment is gonna be cheaper than some of the other. Pieces that we would have to do. So I'm asking for approval to go ahead with it. I know we don't usually do five-year contracts, but that will save us a lot more money. I looked at a three-year contract, and a five-year contract makes better sense. And you have to have these things for, uh, making sure you're in compliance with healthcare, education and on, and onboarding and so forth, so.
So, am I, am I reading this right? Uh, a three-year contract would be nineteen plus twenty plus twenty, forty nine dollars.
A three-year contract would be, uh, they might give us that, that amount, actually, it would be more. I asked them to give me a five-year quote. Because, and I'm sorry, I should have probably brought the three-year quote in, because it was actually higher to only do three years than it is to go out five. But I was trying to save money on cheap, even if it doesn't appear so.
I think it's great, Kathy, I think we, I think training is important, and this is, uh. I think standardizing our policies is good, um, I think it's good. I just, my only question was about the contract thing, are we allowed to? Cause we. Yeah, I, I guess that's a question for Allison, cause I know we're not allowed to encumber a, a future board, so.
We're not supposed to, from my understanding, but it gives us a way out, yes. We don't like it.
The boards. I don't know.
You, you, you can bind a future, you can contract for longer than the existing board's term. But under the Mariano doctrine, it can be voidable by the board. If it is not a contract which is necessary to the operation of the facility to go past the term of the board.
Yeah, I, I know about that encumbering, but geez, I was trying to find the cheapest route. Um, I will tell you though, that your contract was for five years before, so I'll just say that.
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering, what about. A contract going five years, but it has significant financial advantage. To the institution to enter that contract. Is it void or voidable?
If, i- i- it can be voidable by the board.
It can be voidable, but it's not void.
Well, and this is, this is the, this is a comprehensive, like, invoice per se, but what I can do is ask them to add language about. Um, a exit clause, cause I don't see it in the invoice piece of it, but we need to probably look at what we can do for an exit clause. But I'm pretty sure.
That's what I generally like to have, is some type of so much notice and have an, have an out, if that's possible.
Right, yeah, and the only other thing I can say to you all is that, um. It's a regulation to be able to have these kinds of things, this is a solution rather than manual, to be able to get all of our. Our work done with our employees.
What does quantity mean on that?
So we gave them a quantity based on what they've done with us in the past of, um, two hundred, two hundred people that would need to.
Or licenses that you would need.
And the, it means for you to be you and the, the manager administrator.
Well, actually, it's the administrator of the program, so I did ask them about additional administrators, and they said. Basically, two people can have the licenses, but others of us can learn the administrator training. I try to at least have two people, and I'd like even a couple more if I can, because then I don't lose it when somebody walks off. And then we don't have any way to, it's a big hassle to try to figure out how to get back into the systems.
And I assume the dynamic health skills is your managers.
Yeah, it's, it's for nursing and, uh, even providers.
So, I have to just get something clarified. You say that the policies, it will be for the policies? So my question is, if there is ever a question of a policy from HealthStream. Will that back us up legally?
Yeah, because this is standard, it's a standard of care, they have to meet the standards of care through, I think that, I talked to them about that. I think they were using the same manual we use for Littman or something, I'm trying to remember. Uh, for the product that they use for part of their stuff, yeah, Lippincott, so they're using standards of care. Like Lippincott has for it.
So, if there was ever a question, some, say a chest tube got put in and it was wrong, the patient came back. We could pull that policy up, and it would cover a specific for Western County Health Services.
That's correct, and anything that's not in it that we feel like we need, we're gonna keep. But, uh, so it'll be a process even for us, we'll start eliminating policies. But at least gives us a, a leeway to have up-to-the-date, cause they update them more often. Up-to-the-date policies and, you know, less signatures and things like that is often, so.
I do.
It's an efficiency piece. I did that with, um, I think it was, there's a company, is it Lippincott or who is it? There's another company that does this stuff as well, and it was wonderful, because they would send us a notice when they updated policies, and, I mean, all we had to do is. Is look at their policies, and they had the update dates on them, and they had all the references and everything like we like.
Thank you.
So, yeah. So with that, I would. Ask you, I mean, you can go for three years, I can't tell you the exact numbers, um.
I would rather go with the one that's so expensive, but we won't fall. I mean, you're gonna have to continue it anyways. I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing anything wrong.
No, that's a good, that's a good question.
Can we add an opt-out clause?
Yeah, we, I'll make sure we have an op, we, I'll make sure that we have a exit strategy with these, an opt-out sort of thing. So basically that we can give a notice and.
That would just cover it, but it's like, why in three years would a board not wanna keep it?
Yeah, especially if it's gonna be less expensive than what it would be to get it new at that point.
Yeah, and HealthStream is really well-recognized in the healthcare community, so.
Now, if they found a policy change, is that change going to be free?
Yes, that's part of the contract.
Okay, because I would hate, oh, now, you need to revise this policy, because the video that we sent would think, you need to buy the new video.
No, and in fact, they actually told us that we could build our own videos for stuff we wanna do and have it added into our program. So that if we had stuff we wanted that's specific to us, we can do that.
Wow.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people, because they really take care of you good. And are very kind.
Place a day, everyday activities, people have an organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo, we play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here, it's a good place to be.
That's a good question, but no, they, they don't, it's a service, so they have to be the rooms responsible for updating it without an additional cost.
Well, Madam Chair, we talked a lot earlier, uh, before, Dottie, you were on the board. About our personnel needing training, and found that personnel in the hospital are willing to learn. They just, in the past, hadn't had the opportunity to get some training on different things. I think that if this is training to help them, that helps us. More training they get, the more they will feel that they are riding for the brand. That's what we want out of burn for.
So, we, we need a motion to ask, directing the CEO. Negotiate a, what, a five-year locked-in price contract. Uh, with. Your surname, Health.
HealthStream.
HealthStream, uh, to include an opt-out clause. What else needs to be said?
You said it.
Uh, with the cost not to exceed whatever the.
Thank you.
Uh, it's the total order value for five years is a hundred and four thousand, five ninety-two.
One.
One oh four, five ninety-two, point twenty-two.
For five, over five years.
Yeah, over five years, that would be a great, something to put in there, so people understand we're not. Most people hundred and four are out this year, are not going to receive the benefit, so.
Right.
You got it?
No, I, I got, you made the motion to authorize Kathy to engage with HealthStream. Then what, what do you want me to say?
For a five-year.
Five-year.
Locked-in price contract with HealthStream not to exceed one oh four, five.
Four, five nine two.
Two, point two two. Um, and to include an opt-out clause. Actually, I didn't make the motion, what I said was, so we need a motion that says.
I just, I just put your name in and I.
Thought we'd try to craft something, then, I'm willing to move it once it's crafted.
The only thing we didn't include in that, but, uh, was that part about it will be paid over five years, or.
Oh, oh, to, not to exceed the hundred and four, five nine two, point two two, payable over five years.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think.
Yeah, yeah, so, I make that motion.
Okay.
I don't have it written how you guys want it, though.
Okay, well, I think I do.
Yeah.
Do you wanna read what you said?
I sure can. A motion was made by William Curly to authorize Kathy Harshbarger to engage. With HealthStream for a five-year locked-in price, not to exceed. One hundred and four thousand, five ninety-five, point twenty-two, payable over five years. And to include an opt-out clause.
Okay, the only thing is it's not five ninety-five, it's five ninety-two.
Five ninety.
Ninety-two, point two two.
And I think I would say, um, I would add, for the purpose of complying with. Education requirements, because it is, it's for compliance, that way, it's not wasted money, it's compliant, compliance.
But, and what about, if you gotta mention compliance? You said, just training or we also, that's with policy?
It's po, it's, well, I would just leave it at compliance for education. Yeah, you don't have to worry about the policy part, cause that's something I can do on a.
So the last phrase would be for the purpose of compliance?
Yeah.
Just compliance.
Yeah, yeah, I. That's certainly a bit, it's. I agree with this.
Yeah, okay, or compliance, because that covers both education and regulatory.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we still need a second on that. Oh, Dottie seconded. Okay. Any more discussion, Ten?
Uh, I just, what was the motion again?
You ever had a pen thrown at you?
Okay, so, so we're all. We've all discussed out and we're ready to vote. Do you have a second?
No, Dottie did. Dottie did. Oh, thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of condensed version, all those in favor of Kathy. Um, hiring HealthStream to do our.
And our education.
Our education.
To meet CMS requirements.
Meet CMS requirements, compliance requirements. Um, for a hundred and.
Thousand.
A hundred and four thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents payable over five years. Um, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Okay, so the motion has passed.
Thank you.
Alright, are we back to you, Kathy?
I I think that will do for this part of the meeting.
Okay, and we have a foundation committee report.
The foundation met and we uh. Basically, we're talking about. The CT project and when we were gonna be able to get that completed. We talked uh about. Meeting times quite a bit, but and then they've changed it. They changed the meeting time from. Whatever day it was to the, a new date, but I can, I sent it to twenty, October twenty-third from the thirteenth, or the twenty-first, maybe it was. So and um, we, they did talk, they did listen to a presentation on. VapoTherm, which is a product that we can use for patients to be able to. Um, keep them in the hospital here and and it's better, it's easier on the patient than it is for them to be like on BiPep or CPep. So that they can actually stay in our hospital and maybe recover from a COPD or. Acute event exacerbation and or pneumonia. So um, they were looking at that and then we gave. The money to dietary for her to get her CDM license for. Dietary, the certified dietitian manager piece that she needs, so that that's pretty much. The long and short of it. I can't remember anything else, can you? Yeah, so. And then they sent a letter since then saying that they wanna start working on. Ideas for raising more funds. So I think I'm gonna put them into the series. Uh, the foundation and introduce them into those series that we're doing. Our next set of series in the paper will be on. The ED and the. Um. That will be on the ED and the. Who did I say was the next one to that? Well, it'll be the ED and another department and I'm thinking it's acute care. Maybe I I decided on. So it'll be those two areas to talk about those pieces of our. Our work that we're doing. I personally, I told Bob Bonner that I think the ads are working, because we've seen an increase in our. Numbers of things that we're be able to be able to do and so the money spent, albeit. More than Charlotte wants to spend for sure. She almost has a heart attack every time. But it it has really worked for us to do that marketing and so we're gonna continue that series for a while and. Go from there. And we've gotten good response from the ad. They put in the paper on Kelly too, so the nurse practitioner.
Good article. Yeah, I really like them.
So it's gonna be, I think it's all good news and to have pediatric patients back into the clinic. Uh, more so than just when they have a urgent knee and I think they'll be good, so.
Um, anything else? Okay, so I wanted to talk about um bylaws. Not, I don't not want to talk about bylaws tonight. I wanna talk about how we want to talk about bylaws. Um. So I was wondering if the, we don't want to get the governance committee up and running. And have Mary and I and one other um. Just work on it, kind of get a proposal, an idea with input from you guys. And then we would come together for a workshop day or work, have workshop half a day and then work it through all together. Does that sound like a good idea to you guys?
Wasn't there bylaws say currently about.
It says that, very good question. I was laughing, because I gave Ann my. She said, when she said she wanted to get a committee together, work on bylaws, I said, I think that's great. And then she said, we'll call it the governance committee. And one of my proposals was to get rid of the governance committee for all of eternity. Right, which, which I am, I am happy. Right, I am happy to get rid of the governance committee for all eternity, but it seems like that's where it fits. Fine, it's still there.
Does that's gonna be long enough?
It won't be for Gary. Um, so, but it, so I mean, that that's what the bylaws say, that it's Mary and I.
Right.
And one other person. And one other person. Um, so. So anyway. So I was looking, I I'd be interested in if somebody wanted to help, if somebody wanted to volunteer for that position.
If we could meet in the evening, I'd be glad.
You, well, we only have.
Right, you said there's some, would somebody volunteer? That could be more than one person would volunteer.
Right, yeah.
Even if there's only one person to be selected.
Right, so either you, either one of you would be happy to volunteer.
Well, he was first.
He was first, okay.
If that meets your criteria, when we can meet, it may not be handy for the bylaws or the, that committee to meet the. William and I be able to meet during the day and I, I can't.
Most, most, well, you, yeah, most days.
What do you think, Mary?
I mean, I know that's not an answer. I mean, I'm willing to work, we're meeting evening, I don't.
I don't, I don't see me, I mean, it's a problem, so, so why don't we? Or it might be easier to meet during the day for the hospital staff and so they don't have to stay at night. Nice for Kathy to be at the bylaw. Cause you and. Why don't, why don't we go with, why don't we go with William, if that's okay, Ted?
That is perfectly fine.
Because that, that would, because I, because I do think it'd be nice for you to be involved in the bylaw. If that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we will, I will, if I had any change of your suggestion.
Right, yes, we'll be able. Yeah, yeah. And before, if, you know, I, we are.
I, I didn't want to sign on for evening meetings.
What's that?
That's mine. That's mine. I understand that.
Changes that were proposed by Kathy and JT.
Oh gosh, that was so long ago. I probably need to look at it myself and see if I still believe in it, so.
There you go. Okay, so. Okay, so we will, we'll. We'll figure out a time.
The only other thing in the regular meeting that I think you guys are gonna need to do is think about when you might wanna meet. Before, I don't know what we're gonna do, because we have to have it in by November first.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
That we're gonna have to meet, um, and so I don't know if you guys wanna try to figure out a date. If we have to have it in by the first tish, what does that mean? Are they gonna? Give it to you on what day? Do you think?
With them and I checked with Myers and Stoffers and Alicia Jop at the state. And she's saying that we may get some additional leeway, because we have an engagement. Letter already for the twenty twenty-five audits. Um, and she would get back to me, but I didn't tell DZA that, so I'll reach out to Daniel. And Sean and say, when can we plan on having our audit presentation?
Then what, then what I guess we are gonna have to do is do it by, I'll send you guys a note about when they're gonna have it ready. And then you guys can try to figure out something from there and I apologize, because I actually think we shouldn't have had to put us through that, so.
Is it, can we, we have to meet before November one?
Yeah, because we have, well, and they said they'll give us leeway. But here's the thing, I think they should get it done so that we can turn it down on November first. And so um. That's what I'm gonna intentionally expect from them, so, and. That means, jeez, we could be meeting, I I don't know. I hope we're not doing it on Halloween, but.
What's, what's the Thursday? What's the last Thursday in October?
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay, so let's, can, so Dish, what's, can you, can you strongly encourage them to have it ready by the thirtieth?
Absolutely.
Okay, is, how does that, how does, how does the thirtieth work for, how does the Thursday? So that's two weeks from today. How, how's everybody scheduled? Does that work? It works during?
I may be out of town, not certain yet.
Okay.
But it would just be a short meeting?
Yeah. It'll be a special meeting.
Especially.
And even briefer if I'm not there.
You don't add too much at a time.
Trust me, we've had long meetings, so, um, and then the only other thing is that I'd like them to give you a deadline. That they're going to need for the audit, because we need to also figure that out if it's gonna fall. When it's gonna fall, so whether it's gonna fall during the regular meeting or it's gonna be a separate time that we're gonna get it.
So is that the audit or the cost report?
The cost report, we have to get by November first.
That's what we're doing this.
And the audit should have been done already, so.
Excuse me.
What?
It's the audit that has to be done. The cost report for twenty twenty-five doesn't have to be done until the middle of November.
Okay, so get a date for that. To.
Intentionally try to get a date so that we can handle it at a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Try.
Hopefully, the trouble is that the middle means fifteenth. My guess is our meeting is after the fifteenth.
Well, I can't meet on thirtieth.
You can't meet on the thirtieth.
No. Do the twenty-ninth.
You could do the twenty-ninth.
Have we been putting November, I just wonder why I got that date in my head, Dish. I think we've been using November first or something. Uh, I may. Okay.
The audit. Um, after twenty-nine, until the week of Thanksgiving for our cost report with. Um, the cost report preparer wants to have it done by the fifteenth. He wants to get it submitted prior to the due date.
Okay. So what's our normal? Twentieth. But I don't think they need.
For Thanksgiving.
Right, but they don't need us for that. We don't have, we don't have a piece in the cost report submission. Right, we don't have to.
I think, I think you have, I think, I think you, don't you have to approve it?
No, they just have to review it by statute.
Right, so that basically to me is that you're reviewing it, you have, I mean, at least the majority of you need to be here to review it.
Okay. Okay, so.
Required.
So how's the rest of you guys, so how's the Wednesday, the twenty-ninth work for the rest of you guys?
Same response.
You're not sure when, yeah, okay.
It shouldn't make any difference to me. I don't, that I know of.
I'm okay.
Okay, so let's figure Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. At. What time? Probably five thirty. Does that sound okay? I mean, the same time is, just keep things as normal as we can.
Well, if we, if you'll access that meeting time and date after it's confirmed.
Right, well, we'll, we'll also.
Send an agenda, so.
Perfect.
Okay, so we will confirm that, but that's what we'll aim for. Did you catch that, Dish? On the twenty-ninth instead of the thirtieth?
Yep, I will have to correct my email. I will, I've already sent it.
Oh, fear me, I'm sorry.
Twenty-ninth is better.
Okay. And then, and then if we start, you said mid-November, if you can, if we can get the audit. What does that have to be in by?
The audit for twenty twenty-four needs to be. By the November first.
But the cost report doesn't have to be till the middle of the piece. Okay, so the cost report. Is due by the middle of November?
Typically, the board doesn't approve it prior to its submission, because it's not an approver, approve or deny. Um, report, but they do have to have a record of it being reviewed in their minutes. To meet the statutory requirement.
Yeah, and then everybody and his uncle wanted a copy of it, so just so you guys know, but um.
Right.
It's, so, so I'm hearing that, so we need a date, that there's some dates that they're available, because I wanna get it on the calendar. And get it done.
You check with Abby about her date availability and completion time? Before we do that, can, may I have that leeway?
Yep.
So, and, and if it doesn't, will, so when does, when should the cost report be filed? As far as the state or the government or whoever is. That's a number, a November first date too.
I thought it was.
No, no. So the cost reports are not required to be filed, it's CMS. Um, it's the twenty-fourth of November is the actual file date that they have to be submitted by. And they're submitted electronically.
To the state, right, but I could have swore.
Federal government.
Right, we still have to review it with the board, correct?
But it doesn't have to be reviewed prior to the submission to CMS.
Well, I can't remember what we did last time.
So the twentieth, the twentieth is our regular meeting and that's before the twenty-fourth.
Let's try to do it on the twentieth.
Let's try to have that ready for the twentieth. Does that work, Dish?
I will definitely make the request.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
It's. Pretty much gone all of November, so it'd be really, it's gonna be tough to do much, except for the meeting.
Except for the meeting.
Except for the meeting.
You fly in the coop.
Yeah. Get to go visit DC lovely.
Okay, so. Are we good? Anything else we need to talk about? Go ahead, Ten.
Chair was brought up earlier in the meeting, although this wasn't on the agenda. And I just see a, something that I'd heard at our meeting at the library with the health department. Was uh, somebody had asked about bringing doctors in and rental space, no like. Uh, it was stated that that by the health department at that time. That we could not give them a discount rate on that room.
We don't discount it. We give them market.
Okay.
And they actually pay.
They do.
That's, that's, I understand.
The bank, I got the square footage for commercial, I took the square footage and whatever space that they were using, did math problem. A couple of times and then gave a rate and Dish counted, checked, double-checked on it with me and.
Okay.
We now have a list for square footage for each room and how to do that, so it is in compliance.
Okay, I just had heard.
Thinks we would discount it, because that's against the law.
Yeah, that, that's what I had heard at that meeting and I thought maybe we had considered it at one time to bring in a doctor. To do.
No, they know better than to ask for that too, because it's a Stark law, so.
Good job, Kathy.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there anything else we need to, before we take a.
We did.
Break.
A break.
An unknown duration.
Five to ten-minute break. Does that work? If they five to ten?
I'm ready.
Okay, and then, and then after that, we will move into executive session.
So you guys can. I don't know if you wanna stay for any of the other stuff, but you can, you guys can be.
Sales partner there.
Okay, okay, so, um, Tish, I think you're.
We do the need, how, why do you just like, Carrie's got one more name.
Okay.
So if you give, if you give her. Or actually, maybe it's two more names.
If they're in person, raise in their photograph, I will question their.
Well, I'll second the motion whenever the motion becomes timely.
Oh, no, I got it, never mind.
Yeah, I think they've got all these.
I just think I have a special.
Sylvia Trotter.
Sylvia.
Okay, all right. I am ready. Uh, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the credentialing of David Plunkett, MD Radiology. Michael DiUrsso, MD Cardiology. Sylvia Trotter, DPM Plagiatry. Hussein Danish, MD Neurology. Kristen Anne Kinsman, MD Radiology. And Joel Brink, MD Radiology.
Joel Brink?
And Joel Brink.
Does someone want to second that real quick?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, um, so it's been moved and seconded that we. Uh, we approve the credentialing of these six people. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, the same?
Second.
Okay.
And second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, sorry, William, please tell your wife.
Sorry and thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Hi. I will blame everyone else, Cheryl, but I will not mention your name.
You guys move out of it, out of the, okay, so then I can take the recording.
William.
Off. Do the recording to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I did. I didn't.
Now, you said we are adjourned.
So, so you seconded.
Oh, it's up here.
No.